Good evening, calling to order the meeting of the Town of Arlington Select Board. It's February 25th, 2019. It's a little bit after 7:15 PM here in the Selectmen's Chambers. All the way, doing a quick introductions first. All the way to my right is Selectman John Hurd. Immediately to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. I'm Selectman Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon. And to her left is Selectwoman Clarissa Rowe. And also with us is our professional staff, Town Manager Adam Chapdulane, Town Council Doug Heim, and Board Administrator Marie Kropelka. I do have a quote today, inspired by the weather, where Mount Washington today had sustained winds of 150 miles an hour and a gust of 160, which is their highest wind in more than 10 years. Sometime I'll tell you the story about how I spent a weekend in January on the top of Mount Washington, but not tonight. The quote is, "I can't change the direction of the wind, but I can adjust my sails to always reach my destination." You may not get what you want in a Warren article hearing, but you may get where you need to be.
Call the W.
First item, discussion, Pediatric Pan Mass Challenge. Who do we have with us tonight? Lauren Bain and Otis Adams? Come on up to the microphone. Welcome. Could you please introduce yourself and talk to us about your proposal? Pull down the mic so you're talking right into it. And then you don't want to both be there, you want to kind of go back and forth.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you to Ms. Marie Kropelka and the Arlington Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight.
Our names are Lauren Bain and Otis Adams, and we are sophomores at Arlington High School. We are lifelong Arlington residents and graduates of Dallin Elementary School and Arderson Middle School.
Tonight, we are seeking approval from the Board of Selectmen, the Recreation Department, and the Arlington Police Department to issue us a permit for us to initiate Arlington's inaugural Pan Mass Challenge Kids Ride.
The ride would take place entirely on an Arlington section of the Minuteman Bike Way in the late spring of 2019.
We would also need a permit from the Recreation Department to use town recreation facilities to stage the ride. And one potential route, subject to approval by the town, would be on the Minuteman Trail, roughly between Hurd Field and the Uncle Sam statue and turnaround in Arlington Center.
The kids' rides are part of the Pan Mass Challenge, which has raised tens of millions of dollars to support the Dana Farber Cancer Institute's Jimmy Fund for Cancer Research.
Many cities and towns across Massachusetts have hosted kids' rides, though Arlington has not yet held one.
We've both participated in the Pan Mass Challenge Kids Rides in Chelmsford, and together we have raised over $15,000 for the Jimmy Fund. Our passion for this ride comes from our personal experiences with cancer.
I lost my father to brain cancer when I was seven years old, and my father was an avid bicyclist, so we thought it was only fitting to celebrate his life and fight the disease that ended it too soon.
I have also had personal experience with cancer. My grandmother, who I was always very close to, battled breast cancer several times throughout her life. Her passing motivated me to take further action. My family is very active in the biking community, and I felt that this would be the perfect way to give back to such a supportive town.
We have both been involved in the Pan Mass Challenge Kids Ride since we were students at Dallin Elementary School. We formed Team Dallin and joined the PMC Kids Ride in Chelmsford, raising tens of thousands of dollars for cancer research over three years. When we attended the Arderson Middle School, we created Team Arlington and raised more money for the PMC Kids Ride. And now, as Arlington High School students, we would like to organize a ride here in Arlington.
You might be wondering why Arlington. Our community has witnessed many cancer-related deaths in the past years, such as Kathryn Malatesta, an athlete and beloved student who attended Arlington High School, and Kathryn Wall, a devoted and popular after-school teacher at the Dallin Elementary School. We want to honor the people we lost and remind people they have a strong support system among their fellow community members, who will always be ready to lend a hand. Arlington needs a Pan Mass Kids Challenge Ride, and we are more than ready to start it.
The kids' ride would be on the Minuteman Trail between Hurd Field and Arlington Center. So in total, one full loop would be four miles for the younger kids, and two loops would total about eight miles. At the starting point, we would give the four-mile-one-loop riders a head start in order to avoid the other riders. At the halfway point of each of the rides, water stations will be provided, staffed by volunteers.
We've worked with Ms. Marie Kropelka and Officer Corey Reteau, and both have been very helpful and informative. We know the police department wants to keep us all safe, so we will take the following steps to keep this ride safe.
So first, we would limit the number of participants. So the riders would probably be limited to about 50, not including several adult ride safety marshals. And police details would be stationed at various points due to the intersections that occur throughout the Minuteman Bike Way.
In addition to ride safety marshals, other volunteers would stand at intersections to make sure that the kids all stay on the trail.
And to pay for the use of Hurd Field and police details, we plan to raise this money through tag sales, donations, and support from the Pan Mass Challenge organization.
We hope to stage the ride and have some family activities like face painting and water balloon toss before and after the ride, and we would also need approval from the Recreation Department to use town recreational facilities to stage these. We've communicated with John Marshall, Director of the Recreation Department, about the proposed PMC Kids Ride. He's been very helpful and committed to helping us find the appropriate sites. Thank you very much for your consideration of this request. We look forward to working with you to support this great community event for a great cause.
Thank you. Mr. Kuro.
I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rowe.
What was the date? Did I miss it?
Have you guys settled on a date?
I didn't hear a date. I didn't hear a date.
We haven't set an official date yet, but we're planning it for late spring this year.
Mrs. Pajwansky, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
Hi. Lauren's mother and Otis's mother and father's friend. We have been working closely with the town, Ms. Kropelka and Officer Reteau. We still have more work to do, but we've taken a lot of steps and heard the concerns that they had to make sure that we weren't flooding the trail with inexperienced riders. And the town has been great, and I know the kids are really excited about making this the first kids' ride in the town of Arlington.
Thank you.
John?
Just a quick question. Is there a minimum length that they need to ride in order to participate?
Typically, the kids' rides are between four and 10 miles.
My only concern, I think it's great, and I completely support this, but would it be possible to cut it off at Mill Street?
Middle Street.
Mill? Then you won't have to cross any streets. And the Uncle Sam Plaza is also pretty congested. So if you have turnarounds there, I think it could create some issues.
Yep.
So, you know, I'm sure the Arlington Police Department, if you work with them, can make these intersections and turnaround safe. But I would just consider if you stopped it at Mill Street, you get the whole run without crossing any streets.
We're happy to work with the...
It's my knowledge.
Yeah, that would make it very short, though.
Yeah.
Well, I think the longer run is from Mill Street, if you took it all the way to Hurd Field to Mill...
You mean go from Mill to Hurd Field?
To Hurd Field.
Okay.
Oh, no, I don't mean, I mean Mill to Hurd Field.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because then, because it seems like a pretty short run after Mill Street, because it gets cut up twice, and then Uncle Sam Plaza's right there. If you did that, it might be a little easier to do the turnaround, and you don't have to worry about any street crossings.
Yeah, I think we're certainly willing to work with the Board of Selectmen and the police to find an appropriate route. I will note that in the several rides that the kids did in the town of Chelmsford, there were numerous crossings, and there, not only were the police there, but lots of parents were volunteering as crossing guards. So we'll continue working with the police department to make sure we have the best route possible.
Sure. Thanks.
First, to Lauren, and our condolences on the untimely passing of your dad and Otis, of your grandmother. Obviously, they've both had very big influence on you both, and I think it's a really good testament to your dad and your grandmother that, you know, you're working through that unfortunate time and coming up with such a productive event in Arlington, as well as the years before, that you participated in it. And I'm really, we're all really impressed with your presentation. Certainly, you've done your homework. I'm going to say all the cliches, and I shouldn't, that makes me sound older, or as old as I am. But just know, whatever route that, between the park and rec, police department and town manager, you know, how you see this event, you know, work towards that. If, you know, you do want to make the modifications, that's fine, too, but it sounds like you're going to have a lot of extra volunteers there and people that will help out. And I'm sure some of us will be snorking down, watching all you all do this, because it is the first for here in Arlington. When you said that, I couldn't believe it, because Arlington's such a bicycle-aware community. And again, I'm really impressed, and thank you for coming out, coming to the Select Board meeting, and, you know, representing young women and men in such an adequate way. I really appreciate seeing you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? All right, we've got a motion for Mr. Kuro, seconded by Ms. Rowe. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Community Preservation, Community Presentation.
Hi, Eric Helmut, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Thank you. And I'm going to try to get some slides up here, but I have some introduction while Jim tries to get that going. And you have the slides in your packet, as well as the information I'm going to go through. So thank you for the chance to come to you and update you on what CPA is doing for Arlington. I think most people know that CPA is a small tax surcharge that the citizens voted to impose on themselves to pay for projects that everyone believes are really important, but are really difficult to make a funding priority in any given year because their long-term needs. CPA funds three areas of historic preservation, open space and recreation, and community housing. And I'm proud to tell you that in our first three years of CPA funding, we have funneled one and a half million dollars in CPA money to affordable housing, 1.3 million dollars to historic preservation, and 2.6 million dollars to open space and recreation. And that latter category really acts like two categories, which is why there's so many more. Some highlights of the many projects we funded include the Robbins Town Garden Water Feature Restoration, which is going to be turned on this spring, the Jason Russell House Preservation, Spy Pond Erosion Control Efforts, upgrades to Robbins Farm Park, and a number of affordable housing projects through town that have come as a result of CPA dollars. One of the best things about CPA, in addition to having that money, is its ability to leverage other funds. And to date, CPA in Arlington has directly made possible $530,000 in new additional funding through matching grants and other incentives, and that doesn't count the more than $3 million in housing project funding that have come in through CPA. So CPA money works really hard, and we're very proud of that. Every year, we, as you know, we need to spend at least, spend or reserve at least 10% of our CPA budget in each of the three categories. And tonight, we're here to let you know what our plans and recommendations are for the next year's budget, for fiscal '20, and to ask you for your input, and to ask you, if you are so inclined, for your vote of support of our recommendations. So with this, I'd like to quickly go through this year's projects. And the first one is just a little bit across the street, Wintermore Park Revitalization. You may remember that last year, we funded a study, a comprehensive study of the possibilities for Wintermore Park. And Jim, if you hit the next slide, that resulted in a comprehensive plan and concept with a lot of public input about what we can do with the space in front of the Dallin Museum or the Cutter House. The proposal that was brought for us, before us by the Planning Department, was for Phase One, which is the space in front of the house and to improve the public plaza. The reason there's a range of public funding is that they gave, we asked for two budgets. It has to do with available funds that we have, and when we get to the budget, I'll quickly point out that depending on how CDBG funds shake out for a different project, we may have enough money to fund the higher amount, or somewhere on the slide in between. So they're ready to go with either option. The other thing I would point out is, in descriptions in your notes of some of these improvements, is that the ultimate decision on which improvements are made, the detailed plans that would come from this, and what gets built, is yours. We are, our position, our job is to decide if this is an appropriate use of CPA dollars, if it meets CPA preservation priorities in Arlington. But we don't sign off on the plans. The park is under the Select Board's control, under the consultation of the Historic Commission, so you would make that decision about trees and walls and walkways and monuments and all that. So moving on, from something big to something very small, the, there are two signs in Arlington that actually have an interesting history. One of them is right outside, actually, they're both very nearby, they're both in terrible condition. They are part of about 300 monuments that were installed in 1930 for the Tursin Teneri of the Commonwealth. And the markers are historic artifacts in and of themselves, just why they're CPA-eligible. They are, there's a statewide effort to restore these. Other towns have used CPA money to do this and to bring them back to condition, and we think that we can do that, both for the one at the Jason Russell House and the one on Water Street, to advertise the historical significance of these events, the Mill, the Mill history of Arlington, and the Jason Russell House, of course, which we know. That'll take about $3,500. Thanks, Jim. Staying in historic preservation's a big year for that. The Old Burying Ground is another very important historical resource in Arlington, and there is a very important retaining wall that is crumbling. The retaining wall is part, intrinsic part of some of the mound tombs, and with the leadership of, actually, Assistant Town Manager Jim Feeney, the CPA funded a comprehensive plan, assessment and conditions, and a plan, a multi-phase plan, to slowly work on the issues that the town really has to do. This addresses the most urgent, to shore up that wall, and other phases will come later. But this will go a long way to addressing the safety concern, but also addressing the long-term needs to preserve this really important and interesting resource for the town. The Wintermore-Robbins Cottage is the one on the left. The reason I put it next to a picture of the Carriage House is because they're not only neighbors, they're both original buildings from the Wintermore Estate, the Robbins Estate, but they are both CPA projects. So the one project on the right was one of our first restorations of the Carriage House. It was a brilliant success. It saved it from falling down and preserved it for future use from the town, including revenue-producing use. And the, its neighbor, the cottage, is sort of next on the ticket. It also needs exterior work to keep, maintain the integrity of the structure and to keep it healthy, so that with other money, I think from Capital Plan, interior renovations can be done that will, that will help renovate the space and use it for, I think there's a need for a youth counseling center and some event functions and other uses that the town needs the space for. But we can use CPA, because it's historic structure, to work on the outside. CPA has been very involved in the history of the Reservoir Revitalization Plan. We funded the master plan for it in the first year, and funded Phase One in recent years that are addressing the immediate water quality needs of the swimming beach and of the pump house. And the Recreation Department has asked us to consider funding for Phase Two, and this would really just be a kickoff for Phase Two. Phase Two is all the work around the perimeter, and there's a lot of work on the trails, both for accessibility and for safety and for erosion control, a lot of invasive species work, a lot of fencing work, parking areas, and the whole shebang. So the CPA grant would kick this off with design and engineering documents, which are very expensive for a project of this magnitude. The total budget, I think, is about $3.5 million, and they have a plan through capital funding and grants to address that.
Do you want questions midway through, or?
Absolutely.
So, classic question, are we going to get Lexington to pay for part of it this time?
Clarissa's laughing.
Well, you knew this was coming, right?
The property is, belongs to Arlington, even though half of it is in Lexington town limits. I think that it's safe to say discussions are being contemplated.
So we actually own all the sides of the, we actually own the plot of land on the Lexington side?
See if anyone wants to correct.
I know the answer. Even though it is in Lexington, the land belongs, the whole of the reservoir belongs to Arlington. It's a very complex deed, but I had fussed about it at the beginning when we were doing the first phase of it, and we looked into it, and we think that it's okay. I was trying to get Lexington to pay for the first phase, too, but then I was told that it wasn't, it really is, does belong to us, so we're on the hook. I would hope maybe that Lexington would, in, once we've done Phase Two, they would look and see all the good improvements and help us out. We'll see. The Planning Director over there, or the Assistant Town Manager over there, might be interested in helping out.
The pilot improvements that we're making are on the Lexington side, they just, Lex Farms, they're Lexington Community Farms. So we're hoping that that is noticed and appreciated by all our neighbors and residents. That was with the Phase One money. Okay, moving on to, also in the Recreation and Open Space Domain, North Union Playground, which is across from Thompson School, one of the most heavily-used playgrounds in town, and also in one of the worst conditions. There are holes in the safety surface, the equipment is well worn out and at the end of its lifespan. And there is a great deal of community support. We've, we almost never have anyone come to our meetings, unlike yours, and we've had people come to two or three meetings to ask us to please make this a priority, residents of the neighborhood. So we have a good plan, and I think the Recreation Department has a good, good idea for how to revitalize this playground.
And we discussed this at our last meeting, I think, under CDBG. There is a plaque memorializing down there, Luciano Park, if that could somehow still be maintained in whatever way.
Right. This is in Luciano Park.
Okay.
It's a little complicated, because there are two playgrounds. One playground is in Luciano Park, and one is attached to the school. And then our usual problem with school property and what's recreation and what's school, it's complex, and so it's a little confusing. But we were learning to work with it, and I believe the Recreation Department is now helping the school department with any kind of playgrounds that they are working on.
So somehow that will be...
Well, this is all, this is all in Town of Arlington, not school department land.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
I had a question on this. So I know that this is also leveraging an earmark, a $100,000 earmark from the legislature, and when we discussed it with CDBG, am I correct in assuming that these two are traveling, the two requests are traveling in parallel, that they're complementary to one another? They're not competing?
Thank you for bringing that up. That was my neglect. Yes, the total budget for this is $425,000, and the $100,000 earmark that was secured by Representative Garbley is here in the town for that. The project I mentioned when I was talking about Wintermore Park earlier, this is, this is the other, the twin, that to the extent, if CDBG decides to commit some funds to this project, that would free up our, some CPA budget to give more to Wintermore Park. So we took sort of a provisional vote in our part pending the CDBG. So that's how that, some moving parts there, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we have next?
We have the study of the Spy Pond Field bleachers. So the Director of Public Works, who is responsible for the upkeep of this structure, you know, they've done some good work in the past. You can see in your materials that they found, that studies have found that restoring the structure itself would cost somewhere between $500,000 and $850,000 or more, and that's before you start getting into ADA improvements. And I think he had the excellent idea that maybe before we look, we go down that road, we see what the community wants to do with this, and what our other options may be, and what the, take a look at what the use of the fields will be, and look to the future, while respecting the historic nature of this and having the Historic Commission onboard. So this would be a robust study. We actually asked them to increase the number of public meetings, so that there would be a total of three for really good, robust public participation, much as there was with Wintermore Park, because it is an issue that the neighborhood cares a great deal about, and we want to make sure the town gets this right. So, you know, we like the idea of funding a study to make sure that we do that, whatever decision gets made about the future of this. And finally, the Winslow Towers is the Housing Authority's property, also near Wintermore Park, actually, and it has longstanding water infiltration issues, and that is squarely in the crosshairs of what CPA can do, because we can help to preserve existing affordable housing resources. And so they've come to us with a plan to ask for $500,000 of CPA money. The Housing Authority is willing to match that, and a little bit more than match that, with $550,000 from their operating reserves, and then to go to the state to apply for matching funds. The last time we did this, we gave a little bit of money to Drake Village for window replacement, and they were able to leverage that with a three-to-one state match from CPA money and a little bit of CDBG. So that always gets our attention. In fact, we publicize that, we make any project a priority if it has the potential to leverage additional funding from CPA. So that is a recommendation this year for affordable housing. And just quickly, on the budget sheet, I know that's not visible on screen, but you have this in front of you. This is how the numbers break down and show that we have a balanced budget. This year, we decided to ask for just 2.75% of the available revenues for our operating reserve, our administrative reserve for the committee, so that we could fund all the projects that were before us.
Ms. Rowe?
Move approval?
Second.
I timed your timeout hiccup, it's every minute. I do those things, but I was...
Joe?
I have one more question, before I realize that you're taking questions in the middle. It's on your smallest appropriation here. I'm just curious, the Tursin Teneri markers, you said that there had been 300 of them that had gone in 1930. Are these the only two that are left, or?
No, these are just the ones that are ours. They're scattered throughout the Commonwealth, yes.
Oh, 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 got it, got it.
There'd be a lot of empty poles.
Throughout the Commonwealth. Yeah, I was going to say, I haven't seen this many. Okay, misunderstood.
And I guess on Lexington, I don't know, do you have, with our, the new town manager over there, anything like that? Do we have any ins to try to get them to work on the reservoir with us?
I think it's worth another conversation. I haven't raised it with the new town manager, but with the change in leadership, it's worth raising.
That's a good idea. I have raised it with the Planning Director. The existing town manager.
Yeah, and if, you know, we can talk, like, we can talk across the Selectmen and stuff like that, too, but it does, even if it's ours, it's, you know, it is, they get, they clearly get the benefit.
Yeah, they get the significant benefit, yeah.
Doug?
It's trimming, if I may, there's actually a few pertinent issues that might be nice to tack onto that, such as the, what is it, the Silver Maple Forest?
Great Meadows?
Oh, Great Meadows, I'm sorry, the Great Meadows.
Similar situation.
The Great Meadows, which are other parcels that the town owns in Lexington.
Is there something that we, like, so in this case, my question is, hey, Lexington, please pay some money. With Great Meadows, what's the ask?
I think it'd be a similar idea.
Really?
I, actually, when I was a Selectman, I went to talk to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I was trying to get her to buy Great Meadows from us, because they just accepted the Community Preservation Act. She said absolutely not. And their access to Great Meadows is far greater than ours, and I hope that with the new town manager, we're going to get a new open reception.
Eric?
Just on that point with, when Selectman Rowe said access, when we took our tour of the perimeter trail of the rez, I noticed that there's open access to a Lexington park that's right there, and we hope people do cross over who are using that park and use that shared recreation space, so, for what that's worth.
Yeah, I totally agree. I absolutely welcome, like, the shared use of this, you know, shared body of water, but...
And Lexington is one of the top five towns and cities that have benefited from CPA, so they could use their CPA funds.
Diane?
And can I take from this that the Chair and the Town Manager will also explore? We did that when the Mugar issue came around. We had several joint meetings with the Belmont Board of Selectmen, and we went to them, and it seemed to kind of harbor and foster, you know, everybody trying to do something. So maybe that's something that can be explored, and it wasn't a confrontational meeting or anything like that. We made it clear, we have no expectations, but this is something, you know, there's some commonality here, let's just have the conversation, and if we go in with, you know, the same two pennies, we go out with the same two pennies, that's fine, but sometimes, you know, especially with this joint meeting, and they know, some politicians know more people are paying attention, we might be able to, you know, foster, it might not be a dollar commitment, but it may be something that is a different kind of partnership that, you know, stops us. So I'm not saying it has to be that, but that's worked in the past with Belmont and Mugar.
Okay, I'll give it a swing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so technically, if I remember correctly, the CPA is obligated to inform the Board of Selectmen...
Consult.
Consult, so thank you, consult. I knew there was a verb there. And I got, Eric inquired what form, and I had to ask him to come and make a presentation. So I think all we should need to do is move, we have a motion, and I think it's from, Ms. Rowe?
Yes, it's move receipt.
Okay. Anyway, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, five zero. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, and so Eric, I know you're on later, and I considered pulling... Yeah, and so Eric, I know you're on later, and I considered pulling you up early, but I'm not doing it because of the warrant article's a hearing, and I didn't want to screw that So moving on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we approve all of the items on the consent agenda with a single vote unless there's somebody who wishes, on the board, who wants to pull things apart. If you wish to talk to something about on the consent agenda, please come on up to the microphone while I'm reading everything through. Minutes of meetings, February 11th, 2019. Patriots Day Committee events on April 14th, 2019. The change of manager, all alcohol license, Jose Maltese, at the Winchester Country Club. Change of stock interest, all alcohol license at Fusion Taste. A one-day beer and wine license for March 9th at the Town Hall for a private event, Stacy and David Mann. A private event here at Town Hall on March 16th for Jonathan Carr. Leslie Ellis School fundraiser here at Town Hall on March 23rd, oh, no, sorry, at the Leslie Ellis School fundraiser, Allison Reiner of Leslie Ellis School on March 23rd, and that's it. Is there anyone here for any of those events? Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Just on behalf of the Patriots Day Parade Committee, of which I am a part, we just wanted to thank the board for its consideration as we seek approval for a full day of fun events on Sunday, April 14th, to commemorate Patriots Day and our cultural heritage. So as in years past, the day will be off to a fast start at 8:45 a.m. with the Boys and Girls Club Fun Run, followed by the Monotomy Battle reenactment at 12:00 noon at the Jason Russell House, and of course, wrapping up with the parade, which is set to roll at 2:00 p.m., rain or shine. So thanks to everyone who braved the inclement weather last year to make the event a success. And as always, any youth, athletic, or community groups, boards, committees, commissions are invited to participate. Visit arlingtonma.gov/parade to join up, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
We have a motion.
Let's move.
Any further discussion about the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Five-zero vote. Community Development Block Grant Subcommittee, Sarah Lee. Welcome. Introduce yourself, tell us why you're interested in community, and...
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Lee, and I've been in Arlington for just under five years now, and felt like I was past due in finding a way to participate really actively in the civic life of the community, so, and I'm really interested in issues of equity and access, and what they have to do with public space and housing and the built environment, and felt like CDBG is just such an important tool that the town has for making sure that those things are accessible to everyone, so it would be a privilege to participate.
Excellent. Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion from Mrs. Hahn, second with Mr. Kuro. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, so we appointed some other people at our previous meeting, and this is a change for us, because the previous times, it's just been a committee of two select board members and some of the town professionals, and so we're looking forward to adding additional citizen input, so you're gonna be part of this new process for us. It's our first meeting, it's March 5th.
Next week, yes. Yeah.
Exactly. See you there.
Great, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five-zero vote. Next up, discussion approval, MBTA Stop Signage Installation and Replacement Initiative. Daniel Amos, no.
So, Dan is under the weather, so Ally Carter's gonna join us for the next two agenda items.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Ally.
Hi, Ally.
Ally Carter, Economic Development Coordinator, here to stand in for my colleague, Dan. So late last year, the MBTA forwarded a memo to the Department of Planning and Community Development with details to propose rear bus sign installations for five bus stops in Arlington. These are locations where a rear bus stop sign, which is necessary to delineate the bus stop zone in a parking lane, has not previously existed or should be moved to lengthen the bus stop zone. This will allow buses to pull out of the travel lane and stop with both doors next to the curb for accessibility purposes for passengers with mobility issues. So installation of the new signs, the proposed locations were reviewed by staff from Department of Planning and Community Development, Arlington Police Department, and the Department of Public Works. And together, we determined that, given the accessibility concerns, the parking impacts from the installation of the new signs are acceptable. We mailed letters to residents directly abutting these bus stops to notify them. So, questions or...
Just one question, and I think the answer is no, but I'm just doing it from memory. The parking spaces that are being contemplated here, none of them are handicapped, correct?
No.
Okay, that's, I didn't think it was, but I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Okay. Looks like someone's, are you...
I'm...
Come on up, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Durell, and I live at 127 Wachusett Avenue. My house is right where one of those signs is gonna go, and I was here with my brother, I guess he's in the bathroom, and the housemate, and we would prefer not to have that rear sign in front of our house. Partly because we've been there over 50 years, there's never been a back sign. About 10 years ago, I guess, they moved it from the corner where it had been the whole time to my neighbor's property. And, you know, in the, when the families are there for the down in Florence Park, they come and they park in front of my house, and I think that's going to eliminate some parking for them, and it's very tight around there, especially during soccer games. So I don't want the sign in front of my house.
And just, so I understand, is it because of the loss of parking, or because of the aesthetic of the sign, or both?
Well, loss of parking more. I don't, I mean, I love the tee, I don't have any problem with that. I just don't see the need for a second, I mean, we've been there all this time, you've never needed a backup sign before. I mean, they can, they should be able to fit in in front of my house, I don't know about anybody else's place, but in front of my house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to talk on this one? Yeah, welcome.
Hi, I'm Ed Sheen, I also live at 127 Wachusett. There's just no need for the sign. Where they proposed to put the sign is over 65 feet away from the front sign. I don't know if you guys measured that.
Could you talk into the mic, sorry?
But it's just not necessary, right there. It'd be right in front of the doorway, walkway, and just don't need it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else here to talk about these signs?
I was just wondering if it's appropriate if Ms. Carter could maybe speak to that general issue? Is this something that's definitely needed? Is this something that can be looked at? I know you're at a certain point in the process, but...
Sure. At that particular location, it's one parking space that would be lost. Oh, so we can revisit any sites to address specific concerns again, but we did, the recommendations came from the MBTA, and we reviewed them based on their specifications, and we actually gave them some additional feedback.
So if you could just, in having that conversation there, just say that it is the perception that it might be two. Clarify if it, and make sure it definitely is one, and as well as if this is something that is a deal breaker, or that, you know, the town, Planning Department, and the MBTA can revisit it and come up with something else. But, I mean, I don't want, the town...
I mean, I can...
I was looking at the pictures.
I mean, I can confidently say, assuming the measurements are correct on the photo, which I have no reason to believe they're not, 25 feet is not adequate for two parking space length. When we mark out a space on the street, it's 20 feet. So certainly not, it's a little bit bigger than one, but it's not two cars. You couldn't fit two cars there. And the tee does have specific distances measured in feet for whether something's near intersection or far intersection, based on how much length the bus needs to get its full width or breadth up against the curb so that people can access both doors. So I do have confidence that the tee knows what they're asking for, and that the placement of this sign is appropriate. That notwithstanding, it's certainly in the board's discretion to ask us to go back and take a closer look, and consider whether or not we want to ask the board to vote yes on this.
If we can just make them aware that, you know, some residents can express their opinion, and if they could look at it, and if they say, well, this is like do or die, or if they say, you know, we can modify it. Just so we, you know, we can pass along the concerns, and what they say is what they say, but, thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, I just had a question. Looking, it looks like the bus stop actually goes across the driveway?
In that location, at Wachusett Road?
Yeah.
It...
It does.
It goes across my neighbors?
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Thank you.
Interesting. Yeah, I'd like to understand more of whether...
All right, does someone want to put this into a form of a motion?
I move to approve all of the requests, with the exception of Wachusett, and to request further follow-up of the town manager and the Planning Department to investigate the placement and requirement of the rear stop sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? John?
This is unrelated, but as part of this, can we ask the MBTA to tell the bus drivers to slow down on Wachusett? Because I live right in that area, and I, it's actually, I'm being serious, it's one of those things that I always see, but I never think to bring up, because I cross on Hillside Ave, and I don't know what it is about Wachusett, but they fly. It's a wide residential street, but for a residential street, they go fast.
Sure.
All I can hear is the Mount Wachusett song, am I lying now? Thank you.
Just to be clear on the motion, too, I mean, I'm not saying that we wouldn't consider approving it, but I think we would like to get some more information on...
I think there's...
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, I got somebody in the audience who wants to go, but...
I guess I would ask for just very specific clarity on what further information, just if it's just confirming what we've said, that is one thing, but if there's additional information, I want to make sure we bring back what the board needs.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to find out, as I think Ms. Mahan said, is this do or die, do they absolutely feel it's absolutely required in this location? I'm just, I'm curious about the placement, too. I guess there are other places around town where stops go across driveways and such, but I'm just...
Yeah, because, yeah. I saw somebody trying to, no?
Oh, there's, this is the person at the MBTA who we would pass that complaint...
Come on over to the microphone.
I'm Andrew Smith, I'm the Service Planner for the MBTA's Bennett District, which includes service on Wachusett Avenue, and we'll certainly let the garage know about potential speeding. There is a, is there a town-wide speed limit of 25 miles per hour?
Correct.
So we'll let the garage know that Route 78 and 84 should be adhering to that.
It's just one...
And I chuckled, and I apologize, I was inappropriate.
No, no, that's, it was somewhat meant in jest, but with a serious undertone to it.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve for and request additional information, is there, or sorry, so the request, I believe, is to confirm, is there any additional request that we need research on?
I would say, if you're looking at this list, I think part of the issue, because I have a lot of experience with this particular area as well, is it's the only residential street. It's a busy residential street, but compared to some of the other main thoroughfares where they're being asked, what particular is about this bus stop that requires this change?
Good. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, Bus Rapid Transit Pilot results.
Ms. Roger.
Do you want to get started while he plugging this in, or...
Sure, so just as a, you know, summary of the Bus Rapid Transit Pilot, it ran from October 9th to November 9th, 2018. It was made possible through a grant from the Bar Foundation to improve bus service, and we worked specifically on routes 77, 79, and 350, the portions that run on Mass Ave through Arlington. We hired VHB, an engineering firm, to do some study to identify the locations that were in greatest need of traffic congestion relief, and we also worked with our partners at the MBTI, the City of Cambridge, the State Department of Conservation and Transportation, excuse me, Recreation, and the Institute for Transportation and Development Policy. So again, just to review, the pilot included the relocation of a bus stop to the far side of the Mass Ave and Lake Street intersection, transit signal priority, and a queue jump at that intersection, the repurposing of parking spaces from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. from Farnham Street to Elway Brook Parkway on Mass Ave for a dedicated bus lane, and some lane reassignments at Mass Ave and Elway Brook Parkway. So all of those pilot features remain in place today, with the exception of the dedicated bus lane. The goals of the pilot were to improve traffic flow, reduce travel time, and increase reliability, and happy to show you some data that shows that we were pretty successful on that score. So toward the goal of reducing travel time, the MBTA buses ran an average of five minutes faster through the corridor during the pilot period. You can see for the 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. hour, the 77 ran 41% faster, and from the 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock hour, 53% faster. Next slide, thank you. For increasing reliability, the buses were consistently faster during the pilot, and the reliability increased. So for just the area from Lake Street to Elway Brook Parkway, prior to the pilot, that runtime was 11 to 17 minutes. During the pilot, it was five to seven minutes. And then we, you know, we collected data pre, during, post-pilot, and we also wanted to pair it with survey results to measure the public's reaction to it, again, pre, during, and post-pilot. So all three surveys together, we had about 1,000, just under 1,000 responses. The post-pilot survey, we had just under 400 responses. Most of the respondents to the survey, the post-pilot survey, were drivers. There were a lot of bus riders, and then a healthy portion of cyclists and walkers. Over two-thirds of the respondents were very satisfied or satisfied with their experience. 73% said the dedicated bus lane should remain, and 58% said it should be extended. With that in mind, we're recommending to implement the dedicated bus lane on a more permanent basis, just for the portion of it that, exactly as we did it during the pilot program. So 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, from Farnham Street and Mass Ave to Elway Brook Parkway. Unlike during the pilot where we used cones and temporary signage, we are suggesting that different infrastructure signage and pavement markings be used instead, on a more permanent basis. For enforcement, working with Arlington Police Department, we're recommending that one traffic officer dedicated to parking enforcement would be in place for the first 13 days of the bus lane, and then afterwards, there would be a sector officer assigned for monitoring that location. 'Tis the season to discuss snow clearance. Basically, the operations would remain the same, just as it is today, for clearing it out for parking. In the extreme case where, you know, the roadway was clogged with snow, the bus could just move back into the driving lane like it is now, but for most days, it could be in perfect shape to act as a bus lane. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Diane?
I went down during the pilot program quite often, and I'm asking this question just because, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but it didn't happen when I was there. When I went down, there was like anywhere, and I... I went down, there was like anywhere, and I understand what the enforcement's going to be, and that's in the middle of roll call, so that's, has to be worked out with the acting chief and the town manager. But during the pilot program, when I went down, there were always seven to 11 officers down there of varying ranks. Did you do days where you had minimal one or none to see what the traffic patterns in pedestrian and bicyclist experience was? Only because I didn't see it. 50% of the time, I was probably down there a total of 13, 14 days, different times. I could also see Mike Radamaka down there a lot, too, so...
Yeah.
Because I didn't see it, doesn't mean it didn't happen.
It was never as few as that. There were, they never got to, later on in the pilot, there was, it became clear that there was less and less enforcement needed as people got used to the new condition, so there weren't as many officers in place.
We reduced it down to...
Yeah.
I had a question. So, I'm curious how paint marking works for, on the, for a three-hour window, like what does that, what does that look like?
Sure.
Yeah.
Take it to the details. Yeah, go for it.
So, we, though the photo you saw showed a completely red stripe, we wouldn't be recommending painting entirely red for the whole lane. We would allow parking spaces to still be parked out and strategically place red paint, so that it's clear that it's a bus lane, signs make it clear that it's a bus lane, but we wouldn't be obscuring the fact that parking spaces are there for the remainder of the hours of the day.
Can I, just to follow up, like, how would they know it's a bus lane only Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 9:00?
Signage.
Signage.
Okay. The signage on the pavement markings and the signage on the road would mirror each other.
Further questions from the board?
My only concern was that I could get into Cape Brada, and I can, so I'm fine.
Move approval?
All right, so we've got a motion from Mrs. Mahan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rowe.
For your Cape Brada.
Does anyone here wish to speak to this one? I see two people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Adam Oster. I live in East Arlington on Cottage Ave. It's an area in back of the CVS. I've been following this since the spring, and I'm a huge fan. I think a lot of people know that, but I was concerned because the report does not say anything about the impact of this program on the safety, excuse me, of the crosswalk at Lafayette Street. And just to be clear, I'm not talking about the operation of the bus lane during the hours that it's in effect, but the removal of the curb extension, the bump out, which was supposed to be temporary for the pilot. And a lot of us worked very hard to get those safety improvements installed, and the town wasn't able to do it until just four years ago. There's no mention of it in the report, although the report does discuss the value of the bump outs in terms of, gee, what if we wanted to extend down to Lake Street, those other bump outs?
There are actually three bump outs in the, in the area.
Right.
And it does mention that.
Right.
And it would, that they expect that they'd have to be removed, and I think that, and I agree with Adam, it should be...
The, the kinds of measures, let me just take a step back. My concern, and I think a concern of a lot of people, is not, gee, we've got to have bump outs, but the, what we want is safety, and there are many ways to deliver that. I think that crosswalk is the only one in East Arlington that does not have a functioning street light at it. It's pretty bad at night. Putting in that street light, and there's a pole there already, would be a significant mitigation of the loss of this other safety feature, the bump out. If for some reason that's not feasible, I don't know what the status of that pole is, I don't know anything about poles, then a different kind of street light, like the lower ones that were put in in East Arlington Center, Capital Square area, that do such a great job of illuminating the crosswalks there. Another possibility, in Cambridge, on Mass Ave, they've installed these lights, and I don't even know what they're called. They're pedestrian-activated, they're blinking lights, they're not stoplights, and it would seem to me that might be a candidate there. So, what I'd like to see, ideally, is everything to move forward, but for these features to be incorporated into the plan, they belong in the plan, they're not an afterthought, and if you don't address them and then decide, oh, this is great, we want to extend this to Lake Street, well, I think people would be justified in saying, wait a minute, you didn't do anything for Lafayette Street. Lafayette Street is one of the two areas in East Arlington that have seen fatalities in the la, over the last 20 years.
Bill Dodson.
I should say one of the three, I'm sorry.
John?
Well, a less mechanical, short-term solution could be to add this as a location for one of our famous flag program locations, where they have the orange flags. I mean, if anything, that allows someone who's concerned about crossing to flag motorists as they go down.
Ms. Rowe?
I, I think it needs to be studied, honestly, because even though, and I, I think that that's, should be part of our approval of it, though all three bump outs are in places where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and, and Adam's right, the others two, other two have lights, but I think it's, despite the Mass Ave improvements, it's still hard to get across Mass Avenue, and I think the bump outs serve a very important function. So, you know, as the, as this is approved, as it goes into detailed design, I would suggest that, that we look at all three bump out locations and come up with a solution for that, for safe crossing, and it may be a flashing beacon, you know, whatever. That's quite expensive, but I think it might be worth it.
So, my motion would be move approval and also request a study for what mitigation will be made with eliminating the bump outs.
Right.
And what the mitigation to that would be. Is that appropriate?
So, I am totally on board with everything that's being discussed. We're not proposing removing any more bump outs tonight.
Right.
I want to, like, I want that to be crystal clear.
Yeah, clear.
I feel like it got a little mixed, that we were pulling out more bump outs without a plan, and that's not what's being proposed tonight.
Right. I think the, the report that was done was very clear and talked about what had to be done in the future, but I'm just saying, this is a schematic plan, and as they get into detailed design, I think it needs to be, those are the, that's, those are the three areas that need to be looked at.
Adam, anything additional, or should I move on?
You should move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to respond to that, too. It's absolutely our plan to study that. That's our priority.
Of course.
That's why we're keeping it, a big reason why we're just proposing the pilot decision.
Thank you.
And for those of you who don't know who this is, when I'm talking to myself at the beginning of the meeting, and I say, hey, GMI, are we ready? This is the voice that booms from beneath.
The voice of MC.
My job is to make you all look as good on television as you do.
You look like television.
Please introduce yourself to our millions of viewers.
I'm Leonard Diggins, I'm precinct three, and I'm a big fan, clearly, of BRT. I'm also on the rider oversight committee for the MBTA and part of, a member of the Arlington Transportation Advisory Committee, but I'm not speaking for either entity. I was very happy about this program. I mean, actually, I wanted to see something a little more aggressive, I mean, where we grabbed a lane of traffic, because as I envision things, we're going to need that parking space for businesses, I mean, Lime Bikes, AV pickup drop-offs. I know it would have been a very aggressive pilot, but I was really thinking about the future, and also with respect to buses, it's actually better for buses if they don't have to pull in, I mean, you get to keep the safety feature of those bump outs, I mean, and as I understand it, or as I recall, because I live in that area, I mean, the Farnham Street bump out is not lighted, nor is the Marathon Street bump out, so, so I, I'm not really aware of any other bump outs that are lighted. But anyways, respect to extending this, I mean, I'm all in favor of it, but what was mentioned in, in the ATAC meeting was a concern about the mitigating, well, not the mitigating, the, the other effects of the pilot on cars, I mean, especially with respect to Herbert Street and traffic coming out onto Mass Ave from those side streets. I think there have been some reports about people who drive in that area having problems getting out because of the traffic being on their streets, I mean, and so, what I'd like to see as part of this is perhaps some way to study, I mean, what happens when you do this kind of transition to a permanent realignment of, of the traffic, because, I mean, theoretically, the pilots are different from the real thing. People may not change their behavior as much if they think something's only going to last for a month or so, and so I think it'd be helpful, I mean, not only for, I mean, transit in general, in the whole area, but also for us, if we decide to do something more in Arlington to have a sense of how things change, because it may be rough, I mean, for 60 days, and then it may settle out, and so if people, like myself, other town meeting members, have concerns, we can say, well, when we did this, this is what happened. So, I know it takes money to study things, I mean, but if we could maybe somehow come up with some way to study it, and part of that would, of course, involve getting, you know, your before data, which would be collecting it now before we do something, so that if we are going to study it, we need to think about it, you know, now and put in place, I mean, gathering the data now before we change things. So, just a request, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Clarissa?
I live on Herbert Road, and I had absolutely no effect from the study, and nobody complained to me on Herbert Road, and I don't want all the police in the, checking out the buses because they actually are very important on Herbert Road to make sure people aren't speeding. So, I thought it was very successful, and I'm sure it will continue to be successful. And Lynn?
Yes.
When they start doing a more aggressive plan for Mass Avenue, I want you to be on the Board of Selectmen, okay? I've done it once, I'm, I'm not having a thing to do with it again.
Excuse me?
Okay.
You move, or you...
I will, I will.
All right. Monica?
No, I've covered precinct four and Thondike Street. Just a quick question, what is supposed to happen today? So, they are presenting the plan. Is the Board of Selectmen going to vote on, on that plan?
Yes.
So, any changes to that plan, how do they get implemented?
So, I think, there are some changes that would come to us, but other operation changes would just be done by the town manager and the planning department without, it would depend upon the nature of the change.
So, for instance, this pedestrian mitigation at Lafayette, if it gets added down the line, I mean, I know we are still at the very beginning of this process, so there is no money yet or anything, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around, how does this proceed from here? Like, I think Mrs. Mahan did propose an amendment to include that mitigation.
Yes.
So, how, how does that work, then? Does that go back to them?
Adam?
So, tonight was asking for the board's support to move forward to implement this. To officially legally implement it, we'll need to come back with some draft traffic rules and orders so that this implementation is enforceable. At that point, knowing that the board supports it, assuming you vote that way tonight, we'll also have had the chance to go out to bid or to design what this is going to look like and go out to bid, so we can certainly add to that what the traffic mitigation will be before we come back here later this spring.
Thank you.
I would also suggest to add to Mrs. Mahan's motion that we require that there be a public meeting in East Arlington to show the public the changes.
I'll take that.
Okay.
Friendly amendment.
Where you got that one?
Well, I would add, too, just so you know, even if the pedestrian mitigation isn't in the plan as we voted, we can always add a pedestrian, a pedestrian light, just like we would at any crosswalk in Arlington, so.
True.
If that makes sense.
But it should be added now.
It's better to be, to add it at the beginning, get the money for it, rather than go looking for the money afterwards, I think. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a healthy discussion, a motion, and a couple suggestions. Is there further discussion, new topics? All right, motion from Mrs. Mahan, second by Ms. Rowe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
RFP Beer Garden. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we discussed this draft RFP at the last board meeting, and several board members made comments or requested some changes, and we've made those two changes. We've eliminated the requirement for those under 21 without being in the company of a parent or guardian. That's been eliminated as a requirement, as we discussed. Applicants would certainly be able to say that that would be how they would choose to operate it, but we're not requiring it as the town per this RFP. We also inserted a requirement that the successful respondent would be responsible for facilitating or paying for the aeration of the lawn at the close of the season in accordance with standards set forth by the Department of Public Works. Aside from that, the RFP stayed as it was, and bringing it back to you for your view and approval.
Quick question on the requirement regarding kids under the age of 21. So, we're not requiring it as part of the application, but are we requiring them to let us know in the application whether or not they intend to implement that rule? Does that make sense?
So, the, the successful respondent would have to come back before the board to officially be licensed, so at that time, they'd have to make clear what their alcohol policies were.
Move approval.
Second.
I've got a question. If the CPA goes through, as, when does the widow more work actually happen?
My understanding is it wouldn't be after, after, until after the season, just based on bidding and getting things facilitated, because we wouldn't have this money voted until town meeting, then we have to go to bid, so we would time it out to be after then.
And it has to be designed.
Okay, got it, okay. We, any further discussion?
I just want to note, I did have a follow-up conversation with the manager. I had had a thought in, in the wake of our last meeting when the ACAC came in front of us and we approved the establishment of a fund. I know the first time we did a beer garden here in town was at Town Day, and we had funded, used that to fund some of the arts and cultural activities. I think they, they put a dollar on, on each beer or, or whatnot. And I know ACAC has been talking to a number of us about how to find a potential non-tax source of revenue to fund some of the arts and cultural activities. I explored that with the town manager. It sounds like under an RFP framework, it's not feasible, but I did want to put it out there, you know, on the record, that I, I see the beer garden as kind of a centerpiece event within the Arlington Cultural District, and there is, you know, a symbiosis between that and other activities, and I think they could be really mutually beneficial to one another. So, I just wanted to put that out there on, on the record. I, it would be great if whoever we choose does have an openness and willingness to work with ACAC and the district, though, to try to find some ways to mutually support one another. But I, I can't really offer that as an amendment to the, to the RFP. And I want to just thank the manager and town council and the board for making the changes to, the other changes that we discussed last meeting.
And Ally.
And Ally.
Ally's been the one doing all the work.
All right, so we've got a motion from Ms. Mahan, sorry, Mrs. Mahan, second by Ms. Rowe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero vote.
Thank you.
Let's do both special town meetings together, Mr. Chapley.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say we are asking to call a special town meeting, for the board to call a special town meeting within the annual, to address the high school building project. There may be one or two other items between now and when the warrant opens that we would add, but the reason for calling it is to ask for both a vote of appropriation and borrowing authorization for the high school project. That will then later need to be on a debt exclusion ballot in June.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'm happy to combine it into one, but I think we have to do it as two separate, so I'll proceed that way, that first, the select board moves approval of calling a special town meeting for Monday, April 19th, 2019, to commence at 8:00 PM at Arlington Town Hall.
April 29.
Oh, I, what, I'm sorry, Monday, April 29th, 2019, at 8:00 PM.
You may have said that, I misheard you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to make a motion that the select board will open the warrant for the special town meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2019, at 8:00 AM, and will remain open... town meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2019, at 8:00 AM and will remain open until Thursday, March 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
And I know, I often ask questions about whether or not we've checked the printing and whether or not this is the latest possible date and so on and so forth, but I already did that, so I'm not going to ask it tonight. Unless anyone else wants to ask you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Next up, future Select Board meetings. So traditionally, we wait until we have an election and choose our new member before we set the calendar for the follow-on, the meetings in April. We have one really important date that I think is really helpful for us to, that I really want to set, which is, of course, when we're going to vote these two override questions. And the calendar, and the thing that made me really feel like I wanted, I wanted to do, you know, do this now, even though we don't usually, is the key dates are that on April 11th, the MSBA Board is going to presumably approve our project. And we cannot take a vote to do the override for that, for the high school, until after the MSBA approves. So it has to be after April 11th. And then April 15th, of course, is Patriots' Day. And April 19th is Good Friday and we're closed. And April 22nd is town meeting. And so one option we could do is do it before town meeting, but I felt like that's, I don't want to do it in a rush. I don't want to be, you know, like, okay, hey, let's do a tax increase and sprint down to the meeting. And so I'm suggesting that we set a meeting for April 17th.
So move, yeah, that, we don't have to move that. You know, I agree with that because that gives us the 48 hours notice that we need because we can't count Monday. I think that's the best. And what time? Just one question on that. Would you anticipate that unless it was something urgent pressing business, that it basically would be a one or two agenda Selectmen's meeting or...
I think it would be a regular one. And I also, with, you know, given that it's the Wednesday before town meeting, I suspect we'll have plenty of things to talk about.
I think that's true.
I hope, I mean, it's 10 days after the previous one and hopefully it'll be a short agenda, but let's really do it.
And I only say that because I envision the two or three items, I'm not saying that that's what it is, around the override exclusion.
Yep.
That's going to be a full meeting there. But I'll leave it, that's your job as chair to do that.
Well, actually, it won't be my job.
Oh!
Yeah, exactly. So that's part of why I'm bringing this up.
Okay, I feel much better about that agenda. Got it. So note it.
It's an unusual, it is unusual for one chair to set a meeting into the, you know, for all those reasons, but I think everyone understands.
And for people that are not going to be there to vote on it, but that's okay.
But I think it's the right thing for us.
Makes sense.
And of course, we will also have a meeting on the 22nd because that's the first day of town meeting and we always have a meeting beforehand.
Same time, 7:15.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
All right, Senate, those meetings are now set. All right, Article 17, I'm sorry, item 17. Articles review. First up, we have bylaw to rename Community Preservation Committee.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Hi, Eric.
Hello, again. Eric Helmut, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. If one article had a name, I would call this the CPC Disambiguation Act. Ever since the beginning of the Community Preservation Committee, everybody, including the Select Board, has called it the Community Preservation Act Committee because we already had a CPC, capital planning. Most towns, it turns out, with CPA, call their finance capital committee something else. So as a result, every time we have a formal communication or report, we have to say the Community Preservation Committee, otherwise commonly known as Community Preservation Act Committee. And I'd like to stop doing that. I consulted with the town manager and town council, they have no objection. I think the opinion is that the state law requires us to have a Community Preservation Committee, but it does not explicitly require us to call it that. The town council had suggested some language we could do in the bylaw amendment that would make that clear, just in case, that what we're talking about by the CPA, C, committee is the same. And I think that's all that needs to be said for me.
And you want the new name to be?
I would recommend Community Preservation Act Committee since that's kind of what we are by common usage.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Doug, you get everything you need there?
Thank you.
Thank you. Len, I think I can actually hear you guys a little bit. I don't know if, we're turned all the way down. Next up, bylaw amendment, tree production, protection and preservation. Ms. Stamps, are you up? Welcome.
Hello. Hi.
I'm sorry, I didn't know who I should...
I'm Susan Stamps from the Tree Committee. And with me is Tim Laqueeve, who's our tree warden, the town tree warden. I thought that I would explain Article 32 very quickly. I know you're busy. I did send you a memo explaining it in detail, so, which hopefully all of you read. And so, but just for the viewers, I will very quickly explain what we're doing. That in 2016, we passed our first bylaw, which regulated the removal of trees on private property during major construction. And we defined protected trees, which were subject to the protection, as being 10 inches in diameter and healthy trees. And then there was a process whereby if a builder wanted to remove trees, they had to do a tree plan, which was a site plan with the trees shown on the plan, then have the tree warden look at it and approve it. And if the builder wanted to remove trees, they had to pay into the tree fund and if they, or they could plant a tree to replace the removed tree. And there are various fines, et cetera, and timeframes, but that's the essence of the tree bylaw as far as I can remember. And then it was amended a couple of years later, in 2018, to change the fee for replacing a tree from a flat $500 per tree, which didn't even come close to replacing the cost of the tree, to an amount to be established by the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, which it did, you did last fall, which was $375 per inch of tree lost, which makes a huge difference. And then, so now we're here today with some further refinements to the tree bylaw, which we found with experience are needed. The first one is that we want to reduce the size of the protected tree from 10 inches to eight inches in diameter. I think if you go around town, you'll see that an awful lot of our important trees are smaller than 10 inches. And every tree in Arlington matters a lot to the tree canopy. So I think that our tree warden has some sort of a demonstration to show you the difference between a 10-inch tree and an eight-inch tree.
Good evening. I'm Tim Laqueeve, Arlington tree warden. Thank you for your time. So I have a crude prop here, but it just demonstrates the difference between an eight and a 10. So the margins of this paper plate are 10 inch DBH. In the shoulder of the plate, that's eight. So it gives you a perspective, excuse me for crude prop, but it just gives you a perspective of what's the difference between eight and what's the difference between 10. So this is just a visual, just to give an idea of what trees we can protect, which is the difference of two inches. Thank you.
Thanks for preparing that without a study and any wasted funding. Appreciate it.
And also, we used, we used two towns as our models for the original tree bylaw. And one was Wellesley, and that was a diameter or diameter at breast height, or DBH, of 10 inches, like we ended up with. But also, we used Lexington, which has eight inches. And since that time, Concord has also adopted a similar tree bylaw, and their diameter is six inches. So we felt that it was reasonable to, personally, I wanted six inches, but I was overruled by the rest of the Tree Committee. The second thing is that there's a definition of tree removal in the bylaw, and it means cutting a tree. And if somebody cuts a tree, removes a tree, without it being shown on the tree plan, then there's a fine for that. And we're simply asking that the definition of tree removal be changed to include that there's damage to the tree during construction and it ends up killing the tree. Right now, there's no protection for trees that were not meant to be removed but are effectively removed by poor practices in work on the property. Oh, and then there are two changes to the tree plan that we're looking for. One is to show nearby street trees on the tree plan. We've had some situations in town where the tree warden approves a great-looking tree plan, and then only after the foundation is dug and a lot of the work is done, that the contractor comes back and says, oh, by the way, there's a street tree right where I planned to put the driveway. Can I take it down? Or can you take it down for me? And its neighborhoods are in an uproar and it's just a big mess. So we thought that it made more sense for, rather than the tree warden, who's a very busy guy, to have to go out and look at every site before they approve a tree plan, is to have the street trees on the plan. So there can be a discussion about how are the street trees, how do they fit in with the plan, and also how they're going to be protected. Because under state law, the contractor is required to not damage any street trees in the construction. And then it's sort of a companion concept, which is on the tree plan, to show how the contractor is going to protect any trees remaining on the site. This is a technical thing, it's called protecting the critical root zone or the CRZ. All the other towns that have tree bylaws have lots of detail about protecting it. We didn't put it in the bylaw because it was just, it was, it was just so much detail that we just felt the first time around, people were already being asked to get used to the idea of the tree bylaw. But we feel it's time because trees are being lost and every tree is important. And rather than, but rather than actually putting that language defining a critical rezone, tree zone in the bylaw, we are asking that the Board of Selectmen's, the Select Board's authority be expanded to not just, it's very narrowly tailored in the bylaw. We're just asking for it to be expanded to any kinds of regulations that are needed to implement the intent of the bylaw. So that would be, for example, the Tree Committee might write critical root zone regulations and ask the Select Board to adopt them. And then finally, the biggest change would be to remove the, right now, if a contractor was to remove a tree, they either pay or they plant. And we want to remove the planting option. And that's because the tree warden has found that either they don't get planted or they don't get cared for after they're planted and they die. It's just not, it just doesn't make any sense. And I wanted, was hoping the tree warden could speak to this issue.
So after the original bylaw was implemented, the change last year was to change the $500 flat fee to the $375 per inch. So a 30-inch tree on the property at that rate would have a fee of $11,250. Or replant a two-and-a-half-inch caliper, which you could find in the nursery, anywhere between maybe $200 and $400. So most contractors would prefer to plant. So it all depends on what kind of trees that they can find, who's planting them, and aftercare. We're finding, I'm finding that the trees aren't being planted properly and there isn't any aftercare. It's just not in the bylaw. And then also, in the bylaw, they have 180 days to plant. So we're finding that now that that property is exchanging hands within that 180 days, so now it's difficult for the contractor to get onto the property to replant. So we're finding that there's a little loophole, that they'll wait until the winter season's through, they sell it, January, February, they can't possibly plant. Hey, Tim, I'm sorry, you know, they won't let me on the property. So these are some things that I'm finding, because it's new for all of us. So we were, we were hoping to remove that option about planting. I support it, and also the Director of Public Works supports it as well. We just think that it would be best to try to save trees. If you want to remove the tree, it's $375 per inch. We'd rather have these trees be saved in the community for our, for our green, our green canopy. So any questions, open for discussion? Any thoughts, concerns?
Move approval.
Second.
By Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Caro. Mr. Caro?
Yeah, I was just wondering, can you give kind of brief technical explanation of how the critical root zone would be computed?
Sure. I actually, if I may approach the Board, I actually have a handout.
Excuse me, the paper plate. It's basically the canopy of the tree.
Yeah.
The canopy is the same as the root bone below it.
Ah.
Thank you, I, you can take that back.
Thanks, Tim. So this greet, this quick description of a critical root zone, I found US-style forestry catalogs, which are available to anybody. Perhaps maybe we could just have either a link to this, or maybe we could actually have this, or something like it, in the tree bylaw that says, okay, this is the main stem, let's protect that, you know, whether it's with two-by-fours or wrapping, this is the drip edge or outdoor canopy, you know, whether it's fencing, some of that construction fencing and that snow orange construction fencing that you may see. It's fairly inexpensive and it's, it's really not too difficult to do. You know, it's just every time you drive heavy equipment over that critical root zone, you're compacting the soil, swishing down the micropores in the soil, pushing out the oxygen. Two or three years later, now that there's more and more canopy dieback. So this is just a quick little insert that maybe we could have people link to and say, hey, you know, this is something that we can do.
Tree lady obviously supports this.
All right.
And I think, you know, one of the things that Tim was just saying was what happened to that beautiful oak tree at the Uncle Sam Plaza. That kind of construction tampering with the roots. There was, there were people in there doing utility work and also a lot of heavy equipment over the root zone. And especially for a big, big old tree, the root zone is really important. So I support this a lot. Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to add that we went through all of these elements of the amendment with Mike Radamacher, the DPW Superintendent, and he's in favor of all the changes we're asking for.
Thank you.
Further discussion? When I read it, I was really worried about the removing, removing the ability to replace trees. But I'm persuaded that the real goal of this is to keep people from cutting the tree down, which I definitely is the part that I agree with. And so I get that that, this, now, your explanation helped me a lot for how I can support it.
Just a quick question on one thing that you said. What percentage of trees that are requested to be removed are 30 inches or in that range?
To answer your question, John, a low percentage. That size tree, we've, I've only come across that maybe three.
What would be the average?
Average, I would say, is anywhere between six inches to about 20 inches.
Okay.
So that's anywhere kind of about the size of a coffee can, all the way up to kind of the size of like a basketball hoop.
Yeah. The $11,000.
You know, we don't...
It's a little scary when we say that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that, yeah, exactly. And that was kind of like an extreme example that we've had up on Hutchinson Road, where those trees were much larger and there were five of those trees. They were about a 40-inch. So that is on the extreme end. But to answer your question, everything's kind of more of that smaller mid-range. But, you know, even if you have multiple trees that are that 10-inch diameter, they do absorb quite a bit of carbon and do absorb quite a bit of storm runoff as well, especially during construction projects.
Any further discussion? Oh, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak to this issue? Seeing nobody. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No, but 5-0 vote. Bylaw amendment, notice of demolition.
Thank you, Fyti.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. This article, as you've received in my memo, was submitted at the request of the Residential Study Group. The planning director provided a memo to myself and the town manager. While it's signed as a resident petition article, the avenue which it arrived before you is essentially through the group that was charged by town meeting to make these recommendations. So, I'm happy to speak on it, and I've been informed by the planning director. I've also had a conversation with Ms. Pyle, whose signature is on this document, but is really one representative of the larger Residential Study Group. The purpose of this bylaw amendment is simple. It is to really capture one specific scenario. As the board will recall, we developed what's called a good neighbor agreement amendment to the demolition notice bylaw. That was essentially meant to encapsulate that when there's significant residential construction activity, neighbors should be notified of the scope of that activity, what's being proposed, what reasonable mitigation measures might be taken to diminish the impact of sound, dust, all that kind of stuff. This proposed amendment adds activity that would trigger the tree protection bylaw to the list of things that would trigger the notice of demolition. And really, what it gets down to is if somebody's going to develop a previously undeveloped lot with lots of trees on it, they want to let, they want to have folks be made aware of that before that development takes place. Because oftentimes, what will happen is the lot will essentially get clear-cut. It is a lot of activity, but there won't be a building permit or other type of application until sometime much later in the future. So, it's not included in that process that sort of lets neighbors know what's going on, starts that dialogue between contractors and the community around them.
Move approval?
Second. My one question would be, is there in fact unbilled any lots in Arlington that are buildable lots that have no structures on them right now?
Yes. Yes.
So, my understanding from the planning director is, A, yes, there are, but B, there's also the possibility that lots are large enough to be subdivided. And oftentimes, the lots that are getting subdivided are, you know, have tree, significant tree canopy on them, because they're not, they don't have a structure on them.
Right. And also, the Hutchinson Road example from last year is a really good example, because there were five enormous trees that were taken down without any notice. So, I think it, and we had, I don't know, six to eight neighbors last year? They were really upset.
Yeah, we got a motion, it's a public hearing. Ms. Stamps, are you here for this one?
Well, I'm here. So, from the tree committee, I just wanted to say that the tree committee discussed this at our meeting last week, and we are, in theory, totally supportive of this amendment. People, we didn't actually take a vote in support of it, because we wanted to see the language of, the proposed language for the motion on town meeting floor, but we definitely think it's a great idea.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Hurd. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
5-0 vote. Vote Election Modernization Study Group. This is a five-registered voter article. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi.
Introduce yourself and tell us about the, what, tell us what you have in mind, please.
Okay. So, I'm Krista Kelleher. I am a resident of Arlington and have been so for 19 years, very proudly. First term, finishing my first term as a precinct five town meeting member. So, I filed this article for two reasons. The first is I care deeply about our electoral system and making sure that it functions effectively. And I know other residents of Arlington would also like assurances that the town is doing everything in its power to make registration and casting ballots easy. People in our community want Arlington to lead and not lag when it comes to modernizing its electoral system and engaging residents in the democratic process as fully as possible. That's the first reason. The second is that Arlington has proved over and over again that there is tremendous value in bringing together individuals from across the community to tackle important matters through systematic analysis. Study groups play a key role in digging deep into a problem or a topic and considering what kinds of actions will best advance the values of our community. And so, I think it's time for our electoral system to be the focus of such a study. So, what are the topics I propose be prioritized in this study group? And I don't have the language with me, but I'm assuming you have it in front of you. I suggest that we reexamine our rules about who can vote, our voter registration practices, available voting times, our method of voting, perhaps our choice of machines, and our engagement with the voting public. So, we want both, and we want and deserve an electoral process that keeps pace with the times, and we should hold ourselves to high standards when it comes to elections. So, this may mean that changes to the existing process and practices are needed to strengthen voting rights, increase registration, increase turnout, and make our vote counting efficient. So, I know you've already endorsed a warrant article to allow legal residents to vote in local elections, which I also support. Arlington would not be the first municipality in the state to take a serious and systematic look at how to improve its electoral system. Cities and towns all across the country, you may or may not know, are exploring ways to reinvigorate the electorate, improve the electoral process. Last year, neighboring Somerville convened a Clean and Open Elections Task Force. In its report published in October, the task force recommended the city adopt 16 separate reforms, ranging from changing the timing of elections to increase turnout, to improving outreach to voting-age high school students, to implementing ranked choice voting for city elections. So, this is just one example of the kinds of changes being considered by a neighboring community. Doesn't mean that we would tackle so many or such a broad range, but it's one example. So, clearly, there may be many paths to improving upon our current system. An in-depth exploration of what is working well, where there's room for improvement, and what potential modifications are possible would provide a good foundation for moving forward and proceeding with modernizing our electoral system.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahon?
I'm all for it. And once I'm off this board, I'd like to help.
I'll be a second.
All right. So, we've got a motion, a motion, a second. So, I've given some thought to this. So, I was thinking, well, first of all, the, we've got a primary coming up, this coming, let's see, sorry. The article, warrant article itself says before the next Arlington town meeting. And I would like us to see if we can get some of our stuff in that's even before the primary, which is before that annual town meeting. So, I think that the charge that we write should say, should ask for an interim report available in time to affect the primary, and then a final report for the annual. And the reason I just say final report for the annual is because we boxed ourselves in by putting it into the warrant, and so, we're still doing that.
Primary in the fall?
No, I meant the primary in the spring, presidential primary.
Okay.
March.
March 3rd. Okay.
Yeah. So, my first, so my first.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so my first suggestion is interim available, I don't know, January 1, something like that.
Yes. Great idea.
I was thinking nine people. I was thinking, member of the select board or the designee, the board administrator, town clerk or designee, registrars or designee, moderator or designee, school department or designee. And the reason I said school is because so many of the actual voting locations are in schools, and I know, and I know that's a source of tension. Then that leaves three to be appointed. Those are not super well, like, as in, like, those, I didn't give a ton of thought to that list, so I'm very flexible if people have other.
I put a lot of designee on it.
It does.
Yeah. Town moderator or designee.
You, sorry, again?
Okay.
Did you want to turn down the designee?
No, 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 no. I think it would be good to get some new, I'd like to see someone that has a green card and wants to vote in a local election to be part of it. I think that, you know, we just, I'd like to see more sort of not official people in it. No. I think that we tend to appoint designees that we know, instead of getting some new people in it, and maybe have a high school student in it. You know, I'm just, I'm trying to think so that we get, make sure that one of the slots is for someone that's just moved to the town in the last five to 10 years. So, you know, we're just doing things in a new way, that's all. I mean, I happen to think that our voting machines, as antiquated and as they are, are actually, I don't think they were hacked by the Russians, do you?
Yeah.
I'm not touching that one. I have but five.
I think they predate the Soviets.
Oh, no, only if you're done.
I'm done.
It's given to her, you're done. Not to be part of the vote, but for committees like this, can we express in writing who, sort of, the chairman pro temp will be, just for the, for setting up and calling the first meeting? And then after, because to have someone kind of, you know, quarterbacking this to get all the pieces, so it doesn't lag.
Yep, I'm with you.
You tell me who that should be.
Okay.
I don't have any feelings.
I saw Adam, yep.
Dipping my toe maybe where it shouldn't be, but would you consider having representatives of the Democratic and Republican town committees?
Yeah. Often, the registrars are appointed by them, so.
Yeah, they actually, I think each party has representation of the registrars.
They do. Yeah. But if it's just one registrar or designee, that wouldn't cover it.
That's true. That's true, and for fairness, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you add Arlington, a Democrat, Republican, town committee rep and a high school student, is that what I'm saying? We're still at an uneven number, which is what we need? Or do we not want to do that?
So, if we say the three appointees, one of them is green card, one of them is high school, one of them is new to town, like, that actually was nine, and then the Democrat, Republican, that gets us to 11.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Come on up.
Steve Moore. I live at 64 Piedmont Street. You might want to consider also a disabled appointee for access to the polls.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we want to define it from the disability commission?
I think that makes sense. Because we do, we should, it makes sense for voting locations and things like that. And I think the list of things, sorry. Yeah, the list of things that are in the study group all makes sense to me as topics. And I, but I also want us to think about, like, what is the customer service of a voter during the registration process? What is the customer service of voter, of a voter during the pre-election process? What's customer service like on election day? Who answers the phone during election day? Like, these are all, like, really important questions that I actually, are not as clear as one would think that they should be, and I really think that this group should be digging into all of that.
I think we're at an even number now.
We are.
Would you want to make someone ex officio, or add one more to a current?
Or we could, I actually specified the select board or a designee, but we put the administrator. We could drop us off.
Make us ex officio, or just take us off?
I would just say even take us off, like I say, like the board administrator.
I think that's true.
All right.
Sorry, two things. The first is, I mean, I think the interim report before the primary is great, although I think as this was initially construed, it was, the thought was that the town meeting, so are you thinking that we would call a special town meeting for this purpose, or it would be an interim report to the board initially?
To the board and the town clerk.
And the town clerk.
Yeah. Because I would say 90% of election function is through those two offices.
Correct. And as far as the charter, I think we have at least one, one person who wants to speak on the hearing around the charge of the committee to.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Come on up. Don't worry, Doug, I'll be asking you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tim Oriantar, and I am a 17-year resident of Arlington on Bates Road in Precinct 7. I'm also the chair of Precinct 7 Town Meeting Members. And I first want to say that I'm quite in favor of the idea of the Election Modernization Study Group and all of the notions for how to, you know, increase turnout, increase the ease of registration and so forth. I'm here on a much more narrow topic, which I think is still relevant to this, which is that in the notion of making the casting of ballots easier and increasing voter turnout, I'd like to advocate the return of Precinct 7's polling site to the Gibbs School, and recommend that consideration of that location be addressed either by the board or as part of the scope of the study group, and could be a general consideration of polling sites in general for the town. If I may, I have sent a letter to the select board. You may have a copy of this, but I'll just summarize the main points of that, which are that Precinct 7 and 6, the polling site was at Gibbs historically. It was moved in about 2005. It's now at Chestnut Manor. The reason I understand is that Gibbs was not ADA compliant. And now that the school has been reopened as a town school, the renovation has been completed, that concern should have been mitigated, should be fully compliant now for disabilities. Thus, and this is not just me, this is a topic that's been bandied about in my precinct between my neighbors, just, you know, conversations on the way to school, et cetera. People would like it back. And so, we'd like to see it moved back from Chestnut Manor to Gibbs. Presumably, you might consider also moving Precinct 6, which is just across Mass Ave from 7, to Gibbs. This would leave Precinct 9 as the only precinct using that site at Chestnut Manor, which I would not recommend changing. There's a high senior population right there. It's very easy for them to go, come downstairs literally and vote. It's not the only place in town, though, that would have a, be a polling site that's serving just one precinct. Currently, Bishop does that, and the Park Avenue Congregational Church does that. One consideration that I pointed out in my letter, which you can have a look at at the town's official website of maps for each precinct, I have a couple of them here for visual aids. So, for example, East Arlington, here's Precinct 3. Hi, camera. And 4, 5, 6, and 7. I print them out just because it shows, you know, the boundaries of the precinct. The precinct is in white. The location is usually shown on the map, but in a few cases, it's so far outside of the boundaries, it's not even on the map. So, here's 3. It's actually right about here, but not on the map. 4 is, 4 is located, sorry, 6, 4. 4 is over at.
Hardy School.
The Hardy School, which is right there. 5 is at Thompson, right there on the map. 6 is at Hardy also, right here. It could be right here, though, at Gibbs. And 7, my poor forelorn Precinct 7, is over here at Chestnut Manor behind the St. Agnes Church. So, 7, 3, and I believe 14 are the, are the three districts that have their locations so far outside of the boundaries, you can't even see them on their maps. So, that's one more consideration for the move. And in terms of cost, I don't have good numbers on this one, but I imagine that the site would be served by the same number of machines, same number of polling workers, and same police detail, just picking up and moving them to a new location. The main incremental cost should be custodial. So, that's a consideration, but it probably will not be that great, and it would be offset, I hope, by increased convenience for members of the precinct, as well as higher turnout, which is the most important thing here.
The police cost, actually, we have a detail there the whole day, so it's actually net a whole new detail when you add a location.
So, I get that, but there seems to be at 7, there's details for both 7 and 9.
No, you just do, we just do one. That's, that's actually the big reason for condensing them, is because you can reduce that police detail cost.
Got it. Okay. Used to me, but thank you. But that is, in summary, my rationale and my express, expression of the wishes of my neighbors and my constituents in 7 to consider the move back from Chestnut Manor to Gibbs of our polling, polling, polling location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's put polling location on, on the chart. All right. So, I've been trying to sketch some things. All right, so I've been trying to sketch some things and knowing that we're drawing things at Doug for Doug to put together some language. How are you doing, Doug?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one thing that I would suggest is that, I think as Mr. Kuro mentioned, part of the structural issue here in terms of the timing is that because it's a committee of town meeting, theory committees of town meetings make reports to town meeting. But I think that if the board's amenable, maybe we could phrase it as interim findings.
Yeah.
And if those findings are essentially an obvious set of things that can be done, they can just be provided, you know, within the, within the.
I suspect the town meetings is going to be, is going to be fine with this, and if they're not, they can change it.
Otherwise, I'm good.
Yeah.
Should we make the chairman pro temp in terms of everything that has to happen to board administrator or somebody else? I'm thinking in terms of, you know, gathering all the people, information, booking a room.
Yep.
And coordinating with all those different people. I imagine two or three staff people from the select board's office may have to take three or four names each, because you know how it is trying to get three of us to agree to accommodate. Or unless you think somebody else.
No, looking at this list, I think that the board administrator is the right.
Sorry, Mrs. Kropalka.
I will say that Mrs. Kropalka has an awful lot to do with elections, and adding to her load will certainly make her happy.
That would be fine.
See?
She's always fine.
Any further thoughts? We did. If someone got, gave a motion.
Ms. Rose, seconded by Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you. Any other guidance for the charge of this committee that we want to give to town?
And, and Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll be happy to work with the point of the article.
Excellent.
There has been a lot of discussion in the past about polling locations, and it is an incredible issue because the Stratton location is hard for some people to get to. And so people have complained about that because it's not walkable for people. So I think it is, I think there are a lot of issues on the table for this committee. And maybe, you know, doing a rank of the most important ones for the January 1st report would be important because I think the location of the, of the polling stations is incredibly contentious.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up, vote to remove police chief from civil service, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So obviously, myself and the board discussed this on two separate occasions in lead up to the warrant, so I'll, I'll be brief. But just to restate, this article, it was submitted at my request, also with, informed by a discussion with the board to remove the police chief's position from civil service. This would require an affirmative vote of this board, an affirmative vote of town meeting, and then a successful passage of a home, a piece of home legislation by the state legislature before we can effectuate that change. Again, the reasons behind my submission of this are twofold. One, for proper, to, to give the town, through the town manager, adequate or proper flexibility in the hiring of a police chief to be able to go outside of the department in, in the future to look for a, a new police chief. And also, once the chief is in, in position, to be able to hold that person to a higher degree of accountability outside of the confines of civil service. I also committed, the last time we talked about this, that if this was to be successful, that for the next hiring of a permanent police chief, we would stay in the department as to not, as to address and be cognizant of morale issues in the department going immediately outside the department in the next hiring of a permanent chief. And I feel very comfortable committing to that should the board, sorry, I don't know, that was a beep or what?
The wind is still blowing.
Should the board vote favorably, I'd be very comfortable committing to that. So I don't want to go on and on, happy to answer any questions or discuss any concerns or other matters the board wants to discuss on this topic.
Just very briefly, because this is our third go-round, but in case someone is tuning, tuning in for the first time, no surprise, I'm adamantly opposed to this. I think history has shown in the past, we did it with the previous chief, we took it out of civil service. I had the same argument then that I have now, that I feel we have several internal candidates who are more than competent, as well as the issues, the message that we're sending to our men and women of the police force. But the, the only other thing I will state, if history has to repeat itself, what we did was when we took it out of civil service, hired the previous chief, two years later, we voted to give that Chief Ryan civil service protection as a civil service chief. And all of the arguments that I stated for why we shouldn't be doing this were the exact same arguments, which I still believe in, having a civil service chief, especially police and fire, gives the autonomy to have an extra layer or lamination in terms of if a chief, if she or he makes a political, personal, whatever decision, gives him that ability to stand alone in terms of maybe making a tough decision that goes against a majority of politics or any town manager administrator. So I will not be voting for this. And I hope that once we do this, if we do take it out of civil service, hire someone out of civil service, and I remember repeating myself, we put it back in again two years later, like we did last time. And I'm not being sarcastic on that.
Oh, sorry.
Please go, yep.
So I have a question. So I've been back and forth on this. When this first came before us, I thought it was just too premature to, to push the vote forward. I've talked to a lot of, and the second time, I thought it was at least an, an article that warranted going to town meeting. What is, if we take it out of civil service, I understand we keep talking about broader group of candidates. Do we have a criteria in place for, because, you know, I'm hearing things from the people I'm talking to, and I've spoken with a lot of officers on the force, most who are against it and some who are surprisingly in favor of it, but if we take it out of civil service, can it be just anybody that we hire to run the Arlington Police Department? It doesn't have to be a police officer, it can be anyone from any profession? Is, is that what would end up happening?
So we would be able to set the criteria, number of years of service, what rank? You would have to have served in for any number of years, whatever it might be. We would certainly not seek to hire someone who's never been a police officer before. I think, you know, what you just said, it, it's not necessarily surprising that some people in the department might be in favor and some opposed, because civil service is very restrictive of who you can allow to take the test. So it's basically two plus one. So it's, if there's one position, two people for that position, plus one, three. So in Arlington's case, there's three captains, only captains would be allowed to take the civil service test if all three signed up for it. If one neglected, then it would be opened up to lieutenants, but you wouldn't be able to really ever get to sergeant. Outside of civil service, we could say five years of supervisory experience in a police position, which would open it up, in the case of committing initially to internal sergeants, down the road, you could open it up to sergeants, lieutenants, captains, deputy chiefs from inside and outside of the state. So you have more, you can set the criteria and be more flexible about the depth into an organization in which you could promote somebody.
So when you say we will set the criteria, the, the town manager's office?
Correct, yep.
And is it going to be, are we going to have, so I understand, we'll, we take it out of civil service and all, then we'll come up with the guidelines. But I personally would feel more comfortable if we had, as part of the vote, somehow we were able to establish based guidelines for what we look, we would be looking for in a candidate? I don't know if that's possible. But like I said, obviously, you're not going to hire somebody that's done police experience. But where, where the concern is, that I'm hearing from people in the forces, that once you take it out of civil service, there's nothing to prevent that.
So, Mr. Chairman, so it would actually be within practice for most, if not all, department heads' positions. I usually, I think I've always come to the board with a description of the process that we would use to recruit, screen, and then hire a position. I don't want to say absolutely we've always had a job description, but I think sometimes we've provided a job description. In this case, I think it would be entirely appropriate to come back before the board with a draft or a proposed recruitment plan, screening plan, hiring plan, job description, job ad with all the criteria to make sure the board is comfortable with what we'd be asking for. And I, and I don't, I don't actually think it'd be that far outside of current practice to do that.
Can I just follow up on that? But the answer to Mr. Hurd's original question is yes. And you're not going to be the town manager 50, 100 years now. The original answer to his question is yes. Whatever that town manager, she or he, deems is appropriate lateral experience. If we got, like, we had a disaster nightmare town manager years ago, that was a four to one vote. So the answer to Mr. Hurd's question is yes. You're saying, I'm choosing not to do that, but by taking this out, it lets any future town manager. And, and Mr. Chapdeline is committing to communicating with this select board, but that doesn't commit, uh, commit any future town manager. And you can say, well, you would hope that then select board hires somebody that has the same characteristics and commitment that Mr. Chapdeline has, but haven't already been through that once. So I just want to make that clear. The answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, that's clear, that's, that's true.
It's kind of like you ask the question about apples and you hear about, you know, the sale of bananas. So I just wanted to make sure you heard that.
Mrs. Mahan, oh, excuse me, Ms. Rose.
I'm going to vote for approval. Maybe I would like to have the approval include going to town meeting with a description of the, and all the things that you just said. I think that would be helpful during the discussion for town meeting.
Is that actually a motion?
That was a motion. It just didn't sound like one. So.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
So, Doug.
Please.
So one more, just to comment on. So there's two things that were, that concerned me. And I don't, I think both options have issues. You know, I've, in talking to members of the police department, they're also concerned about the way it works in civil service, in particularly able to, the narrow parameters and how you get to that final candidate. And, you know, I think with this, with the way the Arlington Police Department operates, it's a great, we've said this before, it's a great police department, it's a model of all, for departments to emulate. So we want to make sure we have a candidate that not just does well in the assessment, but kind of fits the role, that can continue to operate the department the way it is. But, so the other aspect of it is in the operation. And can you just comment as to the protections that would be in place if we take it out of civil service to make sure that the chief of police is able to make decisions, whether it be disciplinary decisions for officers or just decisions facing the, the department without the political pressure that we all feel? Because that, that's important to me, to make sure that whoever is the chief of police, when they make, they come to a difficult decision, they can make sure that they're doing it in the best interest of the department and not because, you know, they've gotten 15 emails.
The count of three rule.
From people who would try to push them to go in a direction that isn't appropriate.
Correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but I believe it's statutorily dictated that a chief of police can give up to five days of suspension and discipline for an employee. Anything above that needs to come to the town manager or the appointing authority, which is in this case, the town manager, for further disciplinary actions, if you understand?
That's correct. I mean, there's a couple layers to it. I mean, there's also dimensions of the contract and the practical realities of labor relations. You know, if you meet out a certain discipline or you fail to meet out a certain discipline, you have to deal with grievances and obviously with respect to anything more significant than that, arbitration, things like that. So I'd say that there's, I, I don't want to give the impression that you're not changing some things about what the town manager's, you know, sort of authorities would be relative to a police chief. But there are going to be limitations embodied both in the general laws and in the contracts themselves.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue? Not seeing anyone jump to the microphone. Do we have any further discussion?
I don't know if there was a second, I didn't write it down.
I seconded.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yep. All right, so we've got a motion by Ms. Rose, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Three to two vote. Thank you. So it is just about 9:30. I'm inclined to keep pushing.
Keep going.
Yeah, just keep going.
Energize a bit.
Yep. Next up, Home Rule, Town Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before the board is consideration of three very straightforward changes to the Town Manager Act, which reflect the fact that the treasurer is now in an appointed office. These would make it also consistent with recent changes to the bylaws. To list them per folks very briefly, it's Section 8, Section 15A, and Section 15C. I've put together something as a draft for the board that mirrors the way that the board approached the comptroller issue to make sure that the board had some sort of role with respect to how the treasurer would be hired or terminated. I don't want to be presumptuous and say that that's the board's, that the board is opting to do that, but I thought that given our previous discussions about the comptroller, having a similar process was at least a good starting point.
Joe?
So I'm, I'm not opposed to that process per se, but I would note, I, I think that the reasoning behind doing that with the comptroller is that the comptroller is meant to be, serve as a check and balance on the finances of the town. And the town treasurer, you know, in their professional duties, it's not so much of a check and balance as, as a, you know, straight up professional position, you know, administering the important financial operations of the town. So there is a qualitative difference, but, you know, if my colleagues feel that we should put that protection in for the treasurer, I don't have a particular problem with it. I'm not sure it's necessary, but.
Is that a motion or no?
I, yeah, I mean, I would, I would move to approve this, I guess, without that provision. I don't, I don't see the need for the provision, but I could be swayed.
Are you moving, you're not moving anything? Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to second if that's, but I think he's going a different way.
I actually can't remember past discussions on this issue.
With, for comptroller?
For, no, for treasurer. I can't remember whether, talking about this before. Like, what the, and I don't, I just, I don't even mean outside this body. Like, I'm trying to think about, like, DOR report or financial committee or previous conversations, what we wanted. Like, I know, like, I, you know, I definitely had wanted the treasurer to be appointed, but I hadn't gotten to the place, I can't remember if there's a secondary layer to that that we were thinking about. Adam, did you have a?
Yeah, I would only add, Doug and I discussed this before he put together this memo. And I, I am certainly open to the board's prerogative on this. I think we thought about it in terms of some of the folks who were opposed to taking this and moving it from an elected to an appointed position were concerned about checks and balances. Though my argument was, and I think this board's argument all along, was that there aren't, is not necessarily a policy level need for checks and balances. I, I don't see a problem with giving people an assurance that there is sort of a public check and balance about the management of the treasurer's position if, you know, if the board thinks it's the appropriate thing to do.
On one hand, am I cutting anybody off?
No.
On one hand, the, it's, it can be a deterrent during the hiring process because some of these, some of the people we're trying to hire for this, this job, like, this is a job that, you know, you're looking for execution skills, not willingness to stand up in, in, in public meetings necessarily. How much of a role does the treasurer still have in, like, bonding and, like, in putting, like, they're still running all the bond auctions and stuff like that? Which means they are coming before us to talk about this. Yep.
Open for town meeting, that's a different thing. Move approval?
Of which version?
As written.
As written.
Okay.
Second, I'll second.
Motion by, on second by Mr. Kuro, any further discussion? All those in favor, for any public, nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There is one public.
He is, but he shook his head.
Hanging in there.
Acceptance of legislation established from the commissions on Disabilities Fund.
Move approval? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, I thought, thought this is something we already discussed, and, okay, sorry.
So I'll, I'll say, conceptually and on its face, I'm supportive of this and have spoken about it with the commissioner. about it with the Commission on Disabilities. However, when I was at the Finance Committee meeting last week, I believe last week, they had a preference for, rather than taking funds that are currently dedicated to the General Fund, and redirecting them to the Commission on Disabilities, that rather, the commission put together a budget of what it wants, submitted to the Finance Committee, and they, the sense of the room was that they'd be very willing to give the commission what they wanted, to do the things they want to do. I haven't had a chance to speak to the leadership of the commission, or the commission about this yet, but rather than run you into odds with the Finance Committee before having a discussion, I think it might be worth tabling it for one more meeting.
Table it. That's fine to table, but just one question. But all we're doing here is setting up the mechanism to have a Commission on Disability Fund. We're not, this isn't doing anything beyond that, what you're saying, because there's, are you anticipating that FinCon's going to say, "No, don't do," you know?
So, they didn't take a vote, but the way the dialogue was written that night, my sense is, it's possible that they would vote negatively on this article?
I withdraw my motion, second Ms. Rowe's motion to table.
Could I ask a question also, before we table, though? I had a question on the wording, as written, the proposed wording of the vote. It says, "Assess for violations of handicap parking." Now, we just went through this whole big debate around overnight parking and giving exemptions to folks with handicap placards or, you know, specified disabilities. Does this, is this general law construed such as that would only apply to, you know, somebody parking in a handicapped space? It wouldn't potentially be interpreted as, you know, taking funds from violations of the overnight parking law, if that other change goes through?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this is set forth in the general laws, and whatever the specific definitions of a handicap parking violation in the general laws are the only things that would be eligible for this.
Okay.
I'll say, if the Finance Committee says no, I'm inclined to support them on this. They have a longstanding policy of trying to resist Balkanizing, like earmarking all these different funds for different things, and they say, "We should look at the budget, we should make the decisions," and I really, I tend to agree with that. So, if they, if they stick to their guns on that one, I'm going to, I'm going to support them.
Okay.
But which doesn't say that the committee, as you say, shouldn't come forward with a budget proposal, and let's fund it. But let's fund it on its merits, not out of a earmark. So, my thought.
I'm moved to table?
Aye, second.
Motion to table, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Acceptance of legislation, PEG Access Fund.
Mr. Chairman, we need to adopt something like this, or our PEG Access revenues go into the General Fund.
Move approval?
Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Hurd, any further discussion? Anybody from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Final votes and comments, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-four, forty-four, forty-five, fifty. I'd like to go through these in order, because I actually did have a couple comments. Anybody on twenty-eight?
Mr. Chairman, may I briefly say one thing? So, I've drafted these, prepared for the board's comments on them, and then I will definitely go back to the different stakeholders and try to finalize something that is agreeable to everybody. Obviously, the board's comment takes precedent over anything else. I just want to let you know that I, there is some work harmonizing, I think, left to be done.
I had one comment on this one, which is, Doug, what do you think? So, Section One, "The terms of appointment to the committee shall initiate shall be three members appointed for three years, three for two years, three members for one year." I think we can strike that sentence. And I think because it adds up to nine, not to eleven, it's confusing.
Fair enough.
I'm not public.
Yes. We really, really don't have any public anymore.
At least media.
Anybody else on twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine or twenty-eight?
I'm sorry, twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Thank you. No, you're absolutely right, my fault.
No, not me.
Anything, but anything on twenty-nine?
No.
Anything on thirty, twenty-nine was polystyrene.
Styrofoam.
Thirty-four, dark skies.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a question. I realized when I reread the uplighting language, so I was walking home the other night, I noticed, you know, a sign, the sign up at Arlington three sixty, for example, has, you know, pretty subdued uplighting on the ground of that, that sign identifying the property out front. If I'm reading this correctly, that would no longer be permitted, and they would have to remove that lighting. Is that correct?
I believe so. I'm sorry.
Did you say the sign at sundays?
Yeah, the sign.
Sorry.
So, this allows uplighting for town and school signage, providing public notices, but it doesn't allow for uplighting of any other types of signage.
This is consistent with, I think, with Mr. Schlichtman, the proponent, is seeking.
Yeah.
There are pieces of it that, to be candid with the board, are sort of venturing into some territory of zoning and environmental design review and things of that nature. I've added, actually, a few things to the original proposal to try to cover things like the sign outside of Town Hall and some other places that are trying to provide this public notice element, whereas I think originally it just said illumination of the United States flag. So, there are some issues that are...
So, I'm concerned that this opens up a whole can of worms, and I'd kind of like to remove the words "town and school" and "providing public notices," and just say "signage."
Isn't prohibit except for, are you saying you want it to permit it on signs?
I want it permitted on signs. If you look, it's an exception, it's under thirty-two D.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Would it be worth a little, having us do a little bit of analysis on the ninety-degree horizontal plane and exactly what common practices in sign uplighting?
Yeah.
I'm not an expert, but above ninety degrees would mean it's going more than that way, so it's not shining on signs. I'm so, very far from not an expert in that, but I am not an expert in that, so maybe that's an easier way to deal with it?
The uplighting is usually much less intrusive than the downlighting, like the light pole that Paul showed us, that's shining in his window. That is a tall fixture, and so, that's sort of, that's called downlighting. And on the uplighting, like the SIM sign, three sixty sign, which obviously is part of the environmental review that they did in the special permit, so that's problematic. But I think, you know, I think you, we just have to look at the language carefully. Nothing jumped out at me when I read it, but, but it's just, there are lots of different lighting categories, and usually uplighting is less intrusive than, you know, something that's coming from above.
Okay. So, we want to put this one on hold for a little bit, then?
Let's just fine-tune it, so...
Yep.
So, that was...
Forty-four, CPA.
I thought it was very nicely written, Doug.
Thank you.
Forty-five, local option residence. Doug, I emailed you one typo on that one.
Oh, I apologize. I'll make sure to correct that.
You don't have to. Apologize, you should correct it. Anything, what else on forty-nine? On fifty, I did have a request on fifty, which I emailed you shortly before the meeting on this, like, I feel like we should put in a little bit more about what we're adopting. Like, what's the effect of this? Like, how much are the fees, or how are they, is there any, is there like a short description that we can, like, we're asking town meeting, we're saying, "Hey, accept this state, let's accept this provision." And I totally get it, that we're doing it so that we get some revenue, but I think we should try to tell, show town meeting a little bit more what we're asking them to buy on, too. Okay. Diane?
I'd like to make a motion to approve final votes and comments for Articles twenty-eight, twenty-nine, forty-four, and forty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have discussion, maybe not directly related to those articles, but I just want to say that I've found, in this process this year, that the reference material that counsel's been giving us has been incredibly helpful. Having that sheet of reference material, and if it's feasible, I think it would be really helpful if we included that reference material as an appendix in the Selectments Report to Town Meeting. I think it would be very helpful with town meeting members, so they know what they're voting on.
Yeah, if they read it ahead of time, that would be right.
If they, yeah, sure, sure. So that they don't have to go chasing that up, it's already there.
It's a lot of pages, and everyone's going to get it.
It is a lot of pages.
Hundred and eighty. Comma should be semicolon.
A lot of, hundred and eighty pages, it was last night.
Yeah, all of it? Like, how much you?
No, there's the reference material on our hearings, the town council. Or we can have a separate electronic-only piece of reference material, it's placed on the town meeting website, and just make reference in the Selectment Board's report that this is available on the site.
Right.
But I think having that all in one place for town meeting members is...
Yeah. When you say, I'm just not sure which you mean.
He's saying like the...
The civil service information.
It's, it was actually in the Articles for Review, the last, the last two rounds of hearings.
Yep.
Doug, Town Council reference materials, and it had the excerpts of the relevant laws.
Oh, that one.
Anything that we're voting on.
Okay. That's, you said the, you said the magic words. Now I understand what you're talking about.
Yes. We could pull those all together, once we're all done with this process, and maybe make reference that they're available on the website.
Okay.
We don't have to print them all, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, I understand. Cool. I just, Diane?
I'd like to make a motion to table Articles, final votes and comments on Articles thirty-four and fifty.
We'll do all of those as a single motion.
Yes. Can we? Okay.
Yeah, because we, yeah.
All right, that's fine. Two-part motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Next up, correspondence received. We've got airplane noise update from Frank Ciano, our liaison, our request for snowplow drivers to limit speed on Jason Street, our resident on Jason Street, and concern about the AHS building project from Peter Silva.
Move receipt?
Second. Seconds.
Moved by Ms. Wong, second, Ms. Rowe.
I will, there is a lady that is concerned about the airplane noise, and I have promised, Mrs. Kropalka, I will call her tomorrow, because she's getting migraines from the airplane noise.
All right.
And I don't get migraines, I don't believe the town manager gets migraines, but it is annoying.
Yeah. And I guess, I will talk about, I just want to say that the letter about the AHS building project was unfortunately built upon a misinformed letter to the advocate.
Yeah.
That has this, this writer to the advocate has conceived of an idea that the high school had a budget of a hundred and fifty million dollars, which was never true. And unfortunately, this particular author has latched on to that fact and said, "We should stick with that budget," when in fact, that budget is entirely a figment of the imagination. Mr. Mahan?
I also received that same letter, and I plan on responding to it, so the board knows that...
Perhaps more diplomatically than I will.
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Mahan, excuse me.
We're, this is for another mother. Can I just add on to number nineteen regarding, from Mr. Bean on Jason Street? Didn't get it through the Select Board, but have seen it consistently for years now, most recently on Facebook. I don't know if it's Barbara or Maureen Gormley, she's on the corner of Mass Ave and maybe Daniel Street, right where Dunkin' Don't...
Yep.
And for some reason, because she's been posting a lot of pictures there, and I do know that this is something that we're continually addressing down at Public Works, I do know that they do have monitors that go up and follow behind, but through the town manager, is there, especially with her property, it's been for years now, I've seen it every single winter. Can we look at that route, and maybe it's, from what I'm hearing and talking, it's maybe not a town driver, it's a subcontractor, maybe we can reassign it to either a different subcontractor, or to the town plows? Because this happens like every winter to this particular location. I apologize to Ms. Gormley that I can't, I'm blanking on whatever, see the Barbara or Maureen?
Princeton Avenue, Mass Ave.
Yeah. Living on a corner is not the best place to live when the snow plows are out. And she lives, I think, close enough where the snow plows are also clearing for schools, and that is a particularly unsavory place to be. Very safe the next morning, but I think it's, you know, that just, if we want to be safe, we have to put up with the noise.
No, no, it's not noise. Where she is on Mass Ave, I read in Dunkin' Don't, it's not near the school.
I know, but it is...
It's that hard-packed ice snow that she has out. And it's just a matter of the plows slowing down.
Yeah.
They wouldn't throw that spray that high. I just wanted to, because I know you'll probably follow up with Mr. Radamaka, if I could just add that, her area right there.
But she, I think she's close to Addison.
So, I'll, I will certainly share it with Mr. Radamaka. We receive probably, number one, snow complaint is plowing in people's driveways. This is probably the number two snow complaint after that, when the snow's a little bit heavier, a little bit wetter, it often gets thrown on the sidewalks. So, I, I'll talk to Mike about it, make sure that we are properly monitoring. I don't want to dismiss that speed could be a factor, but there is sort of just a sliding scale of the heavier and wetter the snow, the faster the plow needs to go to make sure that it's moving it. So, there are times where it is just challenging to make sure that the plow's getting down the street and moving the snow, and it is throwing it into the sidewalk.
Right, it is.
But I will talk to Mr. Radamaka about this.
Yeah, because we have this problem with Arlington Swifty Printing and all those businesses up there. Because when it goes up against that way, that's, to me, that's speed, really. So, if we could just do a reminder for that, because, you know, and I honestly don't know her, I probably met her, but anyways, good, thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
I wanted to make a note on the airplane noise one as well. I think we owe Mr. Ciano a gratitude. He's been going for many years.
He has.
He's been going to these Massport CAC meetings, going to meetings in Belmont and everywhere else on the quiet skies. He's been traveling down to Milton, or wherever it is, and he's been very good about sending updates. And I'll just say to Ms. Rowe, that if you do have someone speaking with, I know that in the past, he's always been happy to add any residents to his email list as well, and so as he has updates, he sends them.
I can call him and say, "Put me and the town manager and this lady on the, on the list."
Yeah.
You know, I've worked in East Boston for a long time.
Yeah.
I know there are a lot of mitigation meth, measures that Massport uses.
Yeah.
Including buying people's soundproof windows.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we fuss enough, we'll get our good windows. So, I think, you know, especially people that are older and their hearing's more acute, right?
So, make sure, I'm sure he'll be happy.
Not at my house.
I'm sure he'll be happy to put her on the list.
Yeah, that's great. That would be great. And Mike gave her more of a migraine, though.
Thank you, Joe.
If we got a motion, I lost it.
Diane?
You got it? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? New business, Ms. Kropalka.
I have nothing.
Mr. Heim?
None.
Chaplin?
So, I was planning on saying this even before we started talking about nineteen. I want to give a thank you to DPW. This has been, it's not over yet, but this has been really a wacky winter, where we've This has been, it's not over yet, but this has been really a wacky winter, where we've received a lot of inches of snow, but there's just been a lot of icing events, and awkward, or awkwardly timed, snow events, and they've just had to be out there a lot of different times, and they've continued to show up and do a great job, so I want to thank DPW for that, and also thank them in public safety for being out there today. We were fortunate, we didn't have a lot of major outages, but we did have some trees down, and some limbs down, and they were out there in these conditions, making sure they were cleaning it up and keeping people safe. So, I want to say thank you to them for that.
Thank you from us as well.
No new business. Deo to the town manager.
All set, thanks.
Ture. Kuro?
I don't have the date here, but I just want to announce that the Select Board does, once again, have a trivia team for the AEF trivia P. Thank you, Ms. Mahan, Ms. Rose, for that.
March seventeenth.
March seventeenth. Same pattern.
Easy one to remember.
It's an easy one to, I know.
And Mr. Kuro will be providing.
I forgot, I forgot that, so I'm not going to be any help to you on the team.
Just let me know where the after-party is.
Hook me up with a wire. Be a lifeline. No more new business.
I have one item, which is that the Long Range Planning Committee met again this morning, and we have two more meetings scheduled later, or one later this month and one in March. Did I say that right?
Yeah, both in March, March eleventh and March nineteenth.
Yep. We are wrestling with, so the school department is looking for a readjustment of the formula related to the enrollment growth, which is, it has been, originally, it's twenty-five percent of new students would, like, we'd give the, increase their budget by twenty-five percent of the tuition. Then it was changed to thirty-five percent, and they're making the case that that hasn't been sufficient. And there's been a lot of, I would say, like, there was, it was an active discussion, but we didn't get to consensus, which is why we're scheduling so many of these meetings. And what I'm really trying to get that group towards is to get something out of a consensus that they can, that would be the basis of commitments for us to make at a vote on that April seven, April seventeenth meeting. In the end, it is only us who can make those commitments, so it really is our thing. But it's, it's nice if we can get some help from these other groups to be on board.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah.
In the past, the Finance Committee has not, they have not been in favor of debt exclusions and overrides. And I may, I had to, at the request of the past town manager, go in and remind the Finance Committee that they are not a policy-setting committee. You may also have to do that. It'll be harder for you. It wasn't so hard for me.
I second that.
That was my only one item.
I don't want to move to adjourn until you.
All right. Our next meeting is March eleventh.
Okay, move to adjourn. I know, I thought it was Mr. Kuro wanted to.
All those in favor, please say aye.